All right, we're gonna get started.
Oh, good, I can see y'all.
Andy? And like to call to order our public hearing. Monday, January 11 via Zoom teleconference. I have 7:33 PM. And we're gonna seat members and prior to the seating of members, I will just poll everyone to make sure there's no conflict with this amendment in this public hearing. And at the same time, we are being recorded, so speak clearly, slowly, and let's not talk over each other. And this public hearing will go fine. So with that being said, the seating of members-
Could I just add, Jim, that people should state who they are when they speak?
Correct.
And everyone should mute themselves. Unless they're talking.
Okay.
Seating of members, we will seat regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Alan Johnson, Dave Miller, and myself, Jim Conway. This is proposed regulation on accessory apartments. Legal notice. Legal notice was posted, or the legal notice reads as, "On November 9, 2020, the Roxbury Zoning Commission approved for a public hearing proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations pertaining to accessory apartments. The commission will conduct a virtual public hearing on January 11, 2021, 7:30 PM via Zoom and teleconference. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit public comment on these proposed amendments to Section 14, accessory apartments." And I will read through this for the record. I don't think it'll take too long. "The intent of this regulation is to encourage the creation of accessory apartments within or adjunct to existing single-family residences for the purpose of providing rental housing for the elderly, single persons, and small families. This regulation is designed to ensure that in creating an accessory apartment, the single-family character of the principal dwelling will be retained. Accessory apartments are further intended to enable the ability of Roxbury's single-family zones to be continued." 14.2 Conversion. "One primary residence and two accessory apartments, or one accessory apartment and one second standalone home, will be allowed per lot. A single-family dwelling may be converted into a single-family dwelling with one single accessory apartment, subject to and upon compliance with the standards and procedures set forth in subsections." 14.3 Standards for accessory apartments. There shall be no more than one accessory apartment in the primary residence, in the primary residence. 14.3.2 An accessory apartment within the primary residence shall have a minimum floor area of 450 square feet and a maximum floor area equal to 40% of the floor area of the primary residence, not including the garage. 14.3.3 The primary residence shall retain conforming square footage for a single-family dwelling. 14.3.4 An accessory apartment in an accessory building shall have subordinate shall be subordinate in size to the primary residence with a minimum floor area of 450 square feet and a maximum floor area of 1,800 square feet, not including the garage. 14.3.5 "In lieu of an accessory apartment in an accessory building, a secondary residence outside the primary residence may be a standalone building. It shall be subordinate in size to the primary residence with a minimum floor area of 450 square feet and a maximum floor area of 1,800 square feet, not including garage." 14.3.6 Parking as required in Section 13 of these regulations for a single-family dwelling shall be provided for the accessory apartment. And that leads me to Procedures for Approval. "No conversion contemplated under this section shall occur, nor any building permit or certificate of occupancy issued under this section until the owner of the building to be converted has received approval from the zoning commission or the zoning enforcement officer. Information provided to the zoning enforcement officer shall include, but not be limited to the following: A letter from the owner requesting review and approval. 14.2 A plot plan indicating the location of the single-family resident accessory structures, lot area, zone designation, and yard distances." 14.3 Floor Plan Showing the Existing Room Layout Proposed Changes With regard to Placement of Kitchen, Bath, Size of Rooms, Ingress/ Egress, Placement of Windows and Doors. 14.4 Certificate Certification From the Town Sanitarium with the Septic System Shall Have Sufficient Capacity To Treat Any Additional Waste Due to a Converted Unit. 14.5 Revocation Any permit for a dwelling conversion or for an apartment in an accessory building shall be subject to revocation of the zoning permit by the commission after a hearing. If upon inspection by the zoning enforcement officer and building official prior to or following certificate of occupancy, it is found that all requirements have not or are not being met, after occupancy, the owner shall, at the request of the commission, permit any inspection deemed necessary by the commission. Failure to allow such an inspection of either or both the primary or accessory apartment would be grounds for revocation. At this hearing, interested persons may be present and heard, and written communications will be accepted. The documents related to this proposal can be viewed on the Town of Roxbury website." And that is it. Now, we have our referrals. This was posted the with our town clerk on November 30, 2020, with the same language that I just read. So that Public Notice Registry. That's the list of people that gets this, they receive this date November 30, 2020. So they're all up to speed. Planning Commission Received for Review on November 30. And the Planning Commission got back to us with, "At a regular meeting of the Roxbury Planning Commission held December 10, 2020, the commission reviewed a referral from the zoning commission proposing amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations pertaining to accessory apartments. The commission reviewed the proposed text amendments to Section 14 of the zoning regulations and agreed they were compatible with the plan of conservation and development. They thanked John Cody for reviewing the proposed changes with them. Thank you for referring proposed amendments to the Roxbury zoning regulations to the planning commission for review and comment." Peter Filos, Chairman. And that leads us to Northwest Hills Council of Governments. They received theirs November 30 as well. And I will read their comments, they're attached. Comment, Northwest, North is Northwest? Northwest Hills Council of Governments. "Staff has reviewed this referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the known concerns of neighboring towns. This amendment is consistent with the regional plan of conservation and development's goals to facilitate the creation of housing options for the region's residents." Northwest Hills Council of Governments. Western Connecticut Council of Governments. "Thank you for submitting the attached referral to West Cog. The opinion of West Cog staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact. Therefore, it is not it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities, and regional staff is making no comment." Malgatuck Valley Council of Governments. They received theirs as well on the 30th of November. And I'm quite sure when "Should a response not be transmitted to you on or before 30 days from our receipt date, you may use this acknowledgement as proof of compliance with the appropriate statute." We're good there. And that's it. Now, I will open this up to public comment. If we have some public would like to question, comments, it is open. Any commissioners have any questions at this point? I'd like to say, this is one amendment that I'm very proud of, and I'd like to thank Kim and John and Karen, because they spent a lot of time putting the words together. And when you read this, it's very easy to understand. And I believe it's a step in the right direction for creating alternative rentals. And it's just, I think it's a plus for our housing.
This is Elaine, and I do have a question. In the wording that mentions it's with the intent for seniors and smaller families. That's stating an intent, but it's not an enforcement of anything, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. No, these, anybody can live in them.
Thank you.
So with that being said, to move along, if we have no public comment, no questions, if we're all good, I'll, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Kim, I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Alan seconds, Kim motioned, Alan seconds, all in favor of closing the hearing? Aye. Any opposed? With that being said, the public hearing is closed. All right, we're gonna move right along. Our regular meeting. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission Monday, January 11, 2021, at 7:48 PM. It's a virtual via Zoom or via teleconference meeting. Seating of members. Again, we'll seat our regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Alan Johnson, Dave Miller, and myself, Jim Conway. And item two on our agenda is, as always, public comment. And I believe we have none for this evening.
That's correct, Jim.
Okay. Approval of minutes, December 14, 2020, regular meeting. Did anyone have any changes, corrections to the minutes of December?
Can you just give me a minute to bounce back, please? I think I was okay. I just want to check my notes. Okay. Thank you.
If everyone's good with the minutes as presented, entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes of December 14, 2020.
And do I have a second?
Dave Miller, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are good. All right, item four. The Carters on 5 Chalbys Road, Notice of Violation. And I believe everyone's received the letter from John.
Yes.
Everybody has the letter. John, do you want to step in at this time?
Um, it's John Cody, yeah, just briefly, I'll just summarize if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It was New Year's Eve, and on my way to work, I drove by and I saw that there was construction at the Grayden Carter poolhouse studio building there. That raised my attention because I know for a fact that they applied to me and were denied, they appealed that, they went to the zoning appeals, they were again denied. And now they blatantly decided to continue with the project. I went there, I talked to the contractor, who was Michael Tracy or claimed to be. Nice guy, I told him they didn't have any permits or anything, and he completely understood. He asked if he could put some plywood on top of the roof to protect it somewhat. I said, I have no problem with that, to seal it in, and then allowed him to tarp it up properly. At this point, I did not issue a stop-work order because it was understood there was no work to be done, there's no building permits, there's no activity supposed to be going on whatsoever. So that was just last week, the N O B one, and here we are right now.
Okay. We do have Anna Carter with us, joining our meeting this evening. And Anna, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah. Yes, I would like to, very much. Well, first of all, hello to all of you. I'm Grayden Carter's wife. And we live at 5 Chalbys Road in the center of town. And I want to thank you all very much for agreeing to postpone the discussion of our party at 5 Chalbys Road until your next meeting in February. I had had a prior commitment scheduled for this evening. I wanted to join you to explain our circumstances. So I hope, I hope you won't mind if I take up a little of your time just to talk about this. In short, this was an honest mistake and a genuine misunderstanding for which we are truly sorry. We had no intention of causing offense and upset to John Cody, the zoning enforcement officer, or to you, the zoning commission. We understood that we'd been denied the variance to construct a dormer window on the roof of our barn facing our garden back in the spring of last year. But we were led to believe that this regulation concerning the non-conforming use of barns was going to be changed, and indeed was changed. What we didn't realize is that our barn would be exempt from this regulation change, which was a genuine misunderstanding on our part. One reason for this is that we were very distracted by a couple of factors. One, we were stuck in France due to the pandemic, and were not able to return home. And the second, which is much more serious, is that we found out that our baby grandson has been diagnosed with a very aggressive disease. And so, as you can imagine, this has taken up a great deal of our time and attention. And I only mention this, sorry, it's very much off me, I only mention it to help explain. This was an honest mistake on our part for which we are very sorry. And we would like to work with you, commission, to figure out a way forward from here. The variance law in this case seems to be particularly harsh. This case is about one dormer window facing our garden and invisible from the road. It would allow us to use the upper floor of our garage as an office writing space for my husband with 71 years old and can no longer climb up a stepladder to the space. Our nearest next-door neighbors, the Tielises, who would be able to see the dormer from their property, have expressed to us their support of the project and would be happy to write to the commission to that effect. Otherwise, as I said, it would be invisible from the road. We've lived here for 15 years, and we love this town, and we donate regularly to its nonprofits and institutions like the library. We invest our time and resources to preserve and restore and keep up our historic house, and we've never had any issue with the town's commissions or prior to this, or with our neighbors. So I would just like to ask the commission to consider whether it really feels it necessary to take aggressive steps to prevent us from installing the dormer, or whether you think it might be possible for us to come to a mutually acceptable resolution of this unfortunate matter. Again, I look forward to discussing this more fully with you next month, but just wanted to try to explain the situation from our point of view tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, what we have here in, I would like to address this with the entire commission. Giving your thoughts. There will be no decisions made this evening. I just want to hear what the rest of the commission, how they feel we need to accept or not accept, deal with the situation. So, Kim, I would like to come to you first and for your thoughts.
Well, like we have done with other other people who have had an interest in doing something that is outside of our regulations, we have asked them to come up with some wording and submit so that we can consider changing the regulations so that things can be accommodated. And so, you know, it's hard not knowing your personal situation and have, you know, all of that, and it's helpful for us to hear what has been going on and your interpretation of of the of the regulation that we did alter. But knowing now that your property or that barn is totally not conforming, you know, and that it doesn't fit. But I think that, I think it's up to you to, this would be my, is my opinion, okay? To come up with some language that might help to as a possible remedy. Right now, you are, you know, I see the project as being totally outside of the regulations and not allowed to go forward. I think that with the and I was thinking about this earlier, after I read the letter about the non-conforming building and what we have always stated, which is still important, that the footprint not be adjusted because it is so close to the road that it's a danger. And then we have decided as a commission that people shouldn't be living in spaces that are that close to the road because of that danger. And so, you know, in future time, would it be okay to change something in the roof and add skylight or add a add a dormer? That's something for the commission to discuss, I think. That's how we.
Okay. Alan, what are your thoughts?
Well, first, I frankly it's one of the most beautiful houses in town. Thank you for keeping it that way. But I would, I would like to make do a drive-by and take a look, but I, I you know, I, I don't think our job is to our job is to protect through regulations are meant to protect and not to be a burden. I'd like to look at it physically and see if we can't work something out. It doesn't sound to me like a it's not like you're building a the huge, you know, you haven't increased the footprint. And certainly not going any higher than what's already in on the property. I'd like to look at it and if we could bring it up again after I've had a look and we've all considered this. I think I think, I think a month isn't a especially under current circumstances. Time seems to stand still.
You'd be very welcome to come and look at it.
Thank you.
Elaine, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm familiar with the house from when the Muzalis resided there, and so I think I have a good concept of the location of the change. What I'm not knowledgeable about is how, what is the percentage of the barn that is not conforming?
I could answer that for you, Elaine. First thing first, the entire building is within the setback.
Okay.
The expansion of the non-conforming building is up on the second floor. And I need to clarify that this is not a barn, this is a pool backslash studio. What it says and what it actually is. We just want to
Okay.
Well, it's a garage as well, the building that we're discussing is a garage.
Yes.
With rains coating and all the interior stuff, but that'll all come out in the wash, thank you.
Yeah, my thoughts are, there's a real, you know, it's such a fine line between what we're trying to do and the distinction here. But I do, I am taking into consideration how it would affect the regulations if we made the change on fully non-conforming. in regards to safety of our residents and and the potential for other decisions to be put through based on this. So I'm, I don't have, you know, I'd like to know, study a little bit more.
Okay, David?
Yeah, Dave Miller, this puts us in a real pickle because we clearly went over the rules and regulations and had to deny the addition. So looking at it strictly from rules, there is no way that the zoning board can do anything with this. This is a a matter, I I presume, that goes to the zoning board of appeals. I don't think we should should even be discussing it.
Okay. Anyway, let me, I will take a moment and my thoughts on on this. The building is total nonconforming. We can't do anything under our current regulations. So that to make any changes, the the current regulations would have something would have to have a petition for his own regulation amendment written by the applicant. And then we take that to public hearing and all that to amend. Currently, we couldn't do anything with our current regs the way they read right now. And this issue, if I believe, John, you can help me out if if stop work order, NOV, any of the above, does that facilitate going to the ZBA to appeal our decision?
It's John Cody right now. ZBA can't do anything until we actually make a decision and do something about this.
That's, that was my question, John. That was my question. Does a stop work order or NOV qualify for that decision?
They can appeal our decision, yes. Right now, the stop work order comes from John Blaney, the building inspector. He's the one who who's said that there's no construction to be done at all at this time.
Okay. So if we issue NOV, then they can go to the ZBA?
We, I believe, I don't see how they could because we don't have a decision on that. What are they going to appeal? Nothing? We need to come up with a decision. They need to appeal it, go to the ZBA. And we'll continue on, but to blatantly, you know, ignore two applications where they're denied.
Yeah, we know that.
I have serious concern with that.
What's the decision the zoning board would make, would have to make to send it back to ZBA?
What are, what is our decision? Are we going to make them restore to the original place as it should be? Or are we going to completely violate our regulations? That's.
So basically, we, our choices are two. Violate our own regulations or remediate the work that has been done. Put it back to the way it was and then appeal that to the ZBA.
Then, well, then they would have to come to us with the regulation change that they want because obviously we can't change the regulation for a violation that's actually being done.
So I'm trying to get this back to the ZBA.
Well, then they would have to appeal our decision to rectify the situation and put it back the way it was.
Correct. So if we tell them to rectify, put it back the way it was, they appeal that decision to the zoning board of appeals. And then we will see what the zoning board of appeals and then the next step. If the appeal board denies them again, they can petition for an amendment change to allow them to do what they want to do.
Well, I think I think that's where we got a little confused because they would be appealing our decision to have them return it to the original status. They would, they're not then, we have two separate categories here. We have the 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 issue of the NOV, the violation that they created. And then they have if they wanted to come up with their language to amend our regulations for every nonconforming building in the town.
Understand. I want to, I want to try to save that till after they go back to the ZBA.
Exactly. I I I agree with you.
Okay, I want to, I want the steps properly taken for us to deny or not deny, there's enough application to deny. We're going, they have to put it back to the way it was and they can appeal that decision to the ZBA.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, there would, there won't be any work to restore it. The restoration order would be appealed.
That's correct. They could peel it. But we've done this before with a pot with a pool that was put in a bad spot. They denied that. And we actually forced them to remove that portion of the pool.
Okay. Now, if if everybody's on the same page as a commission, if we're in agreement to this, we have to tell the Carters to put back what they have done on the roof. And if they didn't put it back, they can appeal it to the ZBA. Because it's just a decision. Wait a minute, Ann. Is everybody on the same page?
Yes, that's helpful to understand the process.
We're going to issue an order to remediate the work that was done on the exterior portion of the building. They will appeal that to the ZBA. We will see what the ZBA says about it. Then if it comes, if they say no, then the Carters will have to write a regulation change that we will have to take to public hearing. But I'd rather that come after a trip to the ZBA.
May, this is Elaine, may I ask a question? Didn't I read somewhere where there is no evidentiary hardship and therefore not eligible for ZBA? Am I wrong?
I'm sorry, Jim, Elaine, that it's John Cody. That was the ZBA's decision. They denied on that grounds. There was no hardship for them to make that expansion. But that is not, we're just strictly, I believe Jim will agree, we're just strictly at the, looking at the NOV for the shed dormer that was that can come out in the wash later on.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, I could be confused and off track here, but I would like to we have only one thing the zoning commission can do. And that is to uphold our regulations to the fullest extent. And that is to put back what they have done, issue that order. They can take that order to the ZBA and see what they say about it. And then we'll continue on after that.
Okay.
Alan?
Whenever I'm allowed to stick, I have.
Ann, Anna?
I just wondered if you know whether if if this goes in the way that you've just described, how soon would we be able to appeal to the ZBA?
John would know, John and Karen could answer that better than I.
It's John Cody. I, Jim, I'll work on drafting a letter tomorrow. I'll get it out this week. I'm sure you can talk to Dinette or Julie. They're on the ZBA and they'll gladly talk to you about how to appeal our decision for you to remove the legal dormer.
I'm, I'm thinking next month with the ZBA. I don't think they're really busy.
Yeah, I, Jim, I mean, it's not to speak out of turn. I think it'll be next month. I don't, I don't see how it could get on the agenda. I think it's next week. It would never make it on there.
Next month, February.
Easily a month, probably more, who knows?
I'm thinking February, February. If they meet next week, their next meeting would be the end of February. I don't see where there should be an issue to get on for February.
Thank you very much.
Julie, would you happen to know anything about that?
Yes, they're actually are scheduled to meet next week. But that's a bunch of administrative stuff since right now you'd be missing all of the notice requirements. But there's plenty of time. They could definitely be seen next month in February and that meeting is anticipated to be February 18th.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's the the right path at this point. And we'll see what happens with the ZBA and then we'll continue on.
Thank you for hearing me out today.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move along and John, you're good with drafting that letter and get the ball in motion.
Oh, I'll, John Cody, I'll jump on that tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you. Item five on our agenda, discussion following public hearing on accessory apartment text amendments. I pretty much feel that we've all discussed this to great length. We're good understanding of what it is. We pretty much can recite it by heart. If there's any other discussion. If not, then we will go around the computer screen. And we need a motion to adopt. Is that right, Karen?
Sorry, I couldn't get to my mouse. Yes, we, you would start with a motion to approve it and then do the reasons and the vote.
Okay.
Okay, give me a minute to go back to it. Do you know what number it is, Karen? Just for the sake of expedience?
14 something, 14.
No, no, I know that, but in the, in the attachments. Oh, there's 12 attachments.
It's it's in the public hearing email, which is separate from the regular meeting.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Yep, that's where I am.
And the second document should have the entire regulation.
The legal notice?
The legal notice, yeah.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
A lot of bouncing around today. Okay, thank you.
I thought it was too many documents to put on one. So I wanted to split them up for you to make it.
That that confusing thing is it does say in in red, the following proposed text amendments are shown in red, but the article is in black and white.
The changes should be in red.
Well, I'm looking, I have a blueprint for the Zoom connection. So I know I'm not in black and then I have the red, the line in red says the following proposed text amendments are shown in red. And that's under legal notice dated November 30th.
Right. So.
That's why I was asking where it was because I couldn't find the the red.
It's not showing up as red on your document? I'm sorry, I did not know that.
Has anybody else seen the same thing I'm seeing? You have it in red, Kim?
Mine is not in red either, Elaine. This is Cheryl. Mine is not in red either.
Candy?
That's strange. Sorry, that's strange. I don't know how that could have happened.
Kim, do you have your own or do you have one that you opened?
No, I have one that I opened. That's what I'm looking at. I think, you know, if you just look at it and see that the things that are crossed off are.
There is, there are no cross offs. That's what I'm saying. There, there's no indication of any changes.
Oh, you must have a different document then. You're not necessarily looking at what was sent in her email?
Well, that's what she told me under legal. Karen, let me, yeah, it was item two on my list. Just as she said.
Try, try the, try the next document. They were all the same, but mine are, mine are printing in red.
Okay.
And and mine are showing up in.
The next one is the same thing. Well, maybe you could save some, can anybody just send it to me? Because I I just don't want to base the decision on.
Elaine, this is, it was Karen's on the 7th at 3:52 PM.
Correct, I have that email. I have them all, but I have 12 documents. And I can't find the one that's written in red.
Candy, is yours showing up in red?
Mine is red.
I I sent the same thing to everybody. I don't get it.
I just opened up a third one. It said 12, right? Does, we're talking about the email that includes 12 attachments, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cheryl, none of mine, I opened everyone the same.
Me too.
Mine heard.
Yeah.
Anything in red or amended in any way.
I guess that must be your computer then. I I don't know what to say about that.
Yeah. I opened it on iPad. Maybe I should try it on a computer. I'm on an iPad. Maybe that has something to do with it. I don't know.
Elaine, yours are not showing cross outs either?
No. I've been downloading them.
Tim's right then, everything that was crossed off was show, shown in red with a cross out.
Yeah, I understand what it's supposed to look like. I do understand what it's supposed to look like and when I.
The papers out?
Excuse me?
Did you print the paper?
No.
We'll print it and it'll come up as red.
No, I printed mine. This is Cheryl again. I printed mine and it did not come up red. So there must be some weird glitch in mine and Elaine's.
Well, mine did.
Elaine, is your email the SBCglobal.net?
No, it's Elaine Curly 53 at gmail dot com. I I have, every single one of these says accessory apartments.
Yeah, they, that's exactly right. It's the same notice that went to all of those different stuff.
Yeah. Sorry, Karen, for the delay, but it's just it's playing guessing games. And it can't be my computer because the email actually shows up in red for referral response. So.
I just sent you a copy.
Thank you.
Elaine, you may have to go onto the website. And get it that way.
If Kim just sent it, I should be able to open it up immediately unless the signals are slow. Because I I have you on my phone for my own for my own speed. Primary, okay. Didn't come through yet, Kim. Elaine Curly, C U R L E Y?
I just cut and pasted from what Karen sent.
Okay, but you're the spelling, C U R L E Y?
C U R L. Yep, 53.
Yep. Okay, well, what I'm going to do is go to my phone and see if it came up on my phone because it's not coming up on my email. So I don't think I'll lose you if I do so, right? I won't, I won't lose you, right? If I bring up an email on my, while I'm on my phone with you?
That's a good question.
Zoom.
Elaine.
If you go to the website, everything is articulated in in the correct colors with the cross.
Perfect, let's do that.
So that might just be a little easier to do it. Go to roxburyct.com.
Got it. Got it. Departments, under departments. Zoning. Zoning?
You, you can either.
Muted, Elaine, go to zoning commission and then under agendas on the lower right-hand corner, hit public hearing agenda and it'll pop up.
Okay, zoning commission, regular, regular meeting?
No, no, go into public hearing agenda. That's where it's located.
Oh, thanks.
Got to get on the public hearing.
Yeah, this is part of that.
Okay, I'm coming.
And then just scroll down.
To?
If you go past the agenda, the. Yeah.
Upload file agenda.
Go past it and then it says to, yeah, you just, it'll show the legal notice and everything will be, is evident in blue and red and cross.
Got it, it's there. Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I don't have this. I definitely don't have this. Thank you.
Are we ready now to move forward?
Yep.
What I need is a motion to approve this amendment?
I make a motion, this is Dave Miller. I make a motion to accept the proposed accessory apartments amendment.
Do I have a second? I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we got to go and everybody needs to give their reason for yea or nay. Kim Tester?
Yep, this is Kim. I, I am in favor. I think it opens up the door for more living arrangements in town and helps property owners use their space effectively.
Very good, thank you. Alan?
I think it will create opportunities both for, for all people to make more opportunities for people to live in Roxbury.
Thank you. Elaine, you ready?
Yeah, I am. I believe that this is very, very well written. Thank you for, to all of those who put the language in. We, I know it was worked diligently. It's much cleaner than what we've had before. And considering the demographic and the flexibility required for the town, it offers that. We didn't have that flexibility before to, for maybe a resident to switch out to an accessory and provide a, a dwelling for a family. So, thank you.
Very good. David?
Yes, I think this amendment helps people that want to stay in town as they get older. They can move into the smaller apartment and lease out the larger house to other people. So it'll, I, I think it frees up a lot of possibilities.
Thank you. And I too, I agree with everything all of you have said. And I am in favor of this to create as much alternative, alternative type housing that we can. And it also, with the eighteen hundred square feet, it really loosens some of the restrictions on current house size and what we had in the past. And I think the eighteen hundred square feet is a great number to encourage people to put on their property. So I'm in favor of it. With that being said, Karen, I believe it's unanimous.
It is, it's unanimous.
Very good. Thank you all for your time and work. This one's a good one. Something we can all.
It's John Cody, I, I'd like to say, throw it out to Kim, she did the majority on that regulation.
Great, thank you. Thank you again.
Really, really well thought out. Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Kim. You were a great help.
Thanks.
Well done. All right, we're moving on. Item six on our agenda is parking regulations. And we scheduled a public hearing for February the eighth. This is a placeholder. We don't need any discussion this evening. It's a minor change for, and, but it had to go to public hearing for next month. So this on our agenda is a placeholder. Item seven, CEO report, John?
Uh, yeah, I just like to touch base. It was, we did have a nice little break while it was slow from Christmas and the holidays. There wasn't much going on, which is thankful. But then it did get busy just last week. It, it, I don't know what happened. I've got probably tuna houses, one apartment, one home enterprise. All that came in, in record time. I do have something good I'd like to say is that the town, looking at a new computer program for us for land use building department, where everything will be synchronized. Where if I sign off on a, a permit, John Blaney will know about it, Newtown Health will know about it, upstairs tax will know about it. We'll know what every building is and stuff. Hopefully we can get that going as soon as possible. You know, we're, we're looking at the fiscal year beginning of that, but hopefully sooner than that. Besides that, it's, it's, it's going to be a busy year, I can tell you that.
Very good, thank you. Chairman's report, I really have nothing this evening for chairman's report other than I think, again, as I said many times, the commission is doing a great job in making the proper and necessary amendments to our regs to keep them current and up to date. And we will continue to do that. Communications. I believe, Karen, we didn't have any?
Uh, that's correct.
No communications. And that's, that's the end of the agenda unless anybody has some questions, something they would like to discuss. Now's the time. Amongst the commission, we can bring up anything you'd like to discuss. If not, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Oh, yes. Alan, so I'm going to say happy new year and I'll second it.
Thank you, Kim. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reposed? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Folks, have a good evening.
Go all and stay well.
Stay well, stay safe, stay healthy.
Stay away from that virus.
Yeah. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Not at all.
Good night.